Everybody. What is the video call you really looking for?
Um, sometimes and sometimes not.
Who did the logo? Who did your logo?
The name of the service we use, but we used a, an online website.
Actually, we've got a lot of compliments about it. Just let you know. Yeah. How clean and just simple it is. Yeah.
The best kind of logo.
We all set? Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March sixth, twenty twenty four. Planning board meeting in South Berwick. I'll ask for those who are willing to stay in the fidget position. Everybody. Good evening, everybody, and we'll start with any public comment. Is any public comments on any items that are not on the agenda? Uh, anything from Zoom? Anybody from Zoom have comments? Okay, moving on. First item of new business we're hearing tonight from South Berwick Boarding. Oh, I skipped approval. Okay. Is there a motion on the minutes? February twenty one, twenty twenty four?
A motion that we approve our minutes from February twenty first, twenty twenty.
Been moved?
Second.
A second, uh, all in favor? Motion's unanimous. Okay, moving on. MSP twenty four is zero, zero, one. Sketch plan review for a dog kennel on Emery's Bridge Road, one eighty eight. Five dog horny kennel, uh, kennel, five dog boarding kennel. Uh, and this is up for major site plan with the application for, uh, this is an opportunity to ask any questions. Uh, and so taking it Riley?
Yes, sir.
Floor is yours.
Great. Great. Thank you. Thanks for having me. Good evening, everyone. I'm Riley Brown, the owner at one eighty eight Emery's Bridge here in South Berwick. Um, and we are proposing to open South Berwick boarding. Um, South Berwick boarding will be a low volume dog boarding facility uh, where we are going to try to set ourselves up or set ourselves apart from others uh, by really focusing on the safety and care of the animals and providing a facility um, that's a little bit different than the traditional larger facility where your pets are not getting the same attention that, uh, we hope to, uh, give that service. The location of the boarding facility is going to be located in a current structure on the property. That's currently a garage and workshop, so we will not be needing any additional, um, external our exterior construction. We'll just be doing some finishes to the interior of that structure.
Pretty straightforward, you know? Uh, for purposes of this again sketch plan, you know, I assume should the board approve this sketch plan? Uh, we should move you to the, the official preliminary. Is it one button? It's just a regular plan. It's not the subdivision. Yeah, okay. I'm just thinking subdivision. Uh, so yeah, we might get to the next round. So one of my first questions will be, uh, initially things seem to be in order. Uh, a quick review. Are you going to be requesting any waivers? For this? If so, we'll need those by the next meeting.
Sure. Yes, we do plan on, uh, having waivers for each of our clients to sign. Uh, so we'll get that together for next time.
Okay, so waivers in terms of the requirements under the land board, uh, the ordinance requirements, you're going to be requesting waivers uh, from any particular, uh, codes, uh, that might be applicable to, to your.
Yes, I will wait.
Jen, is there anything you want to add to that?
Coming in tomorrow and we will go over what's missing.
All right, okay. Sounds like a plan. Uh, so we can address those all at the next round, so. I think, any idea what those might be? Would they have a substantive impact on approval?
Um, so not really. So here's the thing. This is a dog kennel that's located at one eighty eight, um, Emery's Bridge Road. There's a few things on that are first site plan, um, but he's not really going to have a site plan. So those waivers are going to be done and in the file just because it's really something that he has to do. But it's not gonna, it's not really gonna affect this project at all. So if he's ready for a public hearing and sidewalk, if you guys choose.
Okay. And Jen, I see here, well, we'll get to that in a minute. All right, um. I don't know, but pretty straightforward sketch plan.
Yeah, I, my only question is, um, we have a noise ordinance and what are you going to do when you have dogs, um, that bark?
Sure. Um, so we plan to always have, um, a dog accompanied by a staff member when they're outside. So we'll never be leaving dogs outside to bark when they're, they're unattended as well as we're going to have, uh, last, uh, kind of let out for the dogs at around eight thirty at night. They'll go out. We plan for probably ten, fifteen minutes and then they'll be right back inside. Um, so I think uh, there really shouldn't be any issue with noise, um, during the nighttime. And I think during the day, that's going to be very limited, uh, based on their kind of structure going in and out and always be accompanied, accompanied by someone.
Was this, is this, um, building like a shed or a garage?
It's, it's going to be in, the current structure is a three car garage with a workshop built off the back of it.
Does it have insulation and drywall inside?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, if there is a complaint, are you going to, is there some kind of mitigation you can do for sound?
Uh, definitely. I think we can, uh, think about ways to, uh, use maybe different types of insulation to limit the noise, um, as well as working with the times that those dogs are going to be outside.
I just know that the last time I took my dog to her kennel, she, three days followed, you know, probably going to everybody.
Yep.
So, um.
Send this to my help next time.
Well, no, no, they are good hiding. It's okay, but she was really pretty raw, don't you think? Anyway, so I just think, you know.
Yep.
If I live near there and I heard a dog barking, I guess some dogs just don't like even kennel.
Absolutely.
Jen, are there, are there going to be any interior renovations that need to be considered as part of this that we might be aware of at this point?
Oh, I don't really think so. I think that, um, they're going to have the, um, what the plan of a kind of provided to the board was pretty, um, it wasn't, it was straightforward. It wasn't labeled. Um, but at the same time, I think that he would have to have a renovation permit depending on scope of work, but he's not really there yet. He needs approval from you before he can get a building permit anyways.
Okay.
Um, can I just answer your question really fast? Kind of go backwards on what, so he would be asking for a waiver from the board for erosion and sediment control plan, not it doesn't, like, he's putting up a fence. Everything else is existing. Um, existing and proposed topography, location of a hundred year flood plan. There isn't, um, location of any areas with fifty foot of the perco site with removal or filling is required, giving approximate cubic volumes. He's not doing that. Um, soils map based on, uh, your pencil soil survey. He doesn't need that. High intensity soil map prepared by main licensed soil scientist. Doesn't need that. Landscape plan isn't going to really need that. It's an existing house. He already has what he has there and it's a dog kennel. And then the last one is only district boundaries within five hundred feet of sites perimeter and zoning overlay boundaries. It's already included in the application. So everything else he has here, so he's good. And I'll help him through the waiver process.
Well, and this isn't oh, maybe all that. Do you ever think you'll expand?
Um, you know, I think right now we really want to focus on giving people a different experience and a different business to have a different option for. Um, so I think that, uh, we really plan to kind of stick to this, this plan with only five dogs maximum. Um, so yeah, that's our, that's our plan right now.
Um, I assume this will be all year round. So you're going to add heat to your building?
Yep. So, uh, we're going to add a kind of garage heat unit to, uh.
Like a mini split?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, yep.
Is it going to be like the, um, the MS, the SPCA in San Francisco where the dogs get couches and TVs and everything?
I don't know if we're going to go that luxurious. Yeah.
Never know.
Yeah.
Never know.
Any further questions?
I just have one, if that's okay with your care. Um, so you're asking for five dog kennel right now?
Yeah.
Um, if you were to expand in the future, just to let you know, it's not even a question, it's a statement, you would have to come back in front of this board before you've been toward any more than five.
Yes.
So five is what you want to apply for?
Yes.
Jen, do we have any, uh, this is the first time I've ever dealt with a kennel, uh, here. Do we have any performance standards for kennels that would need to be met?
Um, I think I looked and I think I added the definition here, but the performance standards for this project is located in this packet for you guys to kind of see what we would be looking at for the running the back.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, fair.
If there's anything further, I will bring it to your next meeting. Yeah.
This, this is a required license here from anyone else that's.
Maybe from the state, he's going to have to have, be a licensed kennel for the state. He's going to have numbers. Um, he'll have to submit that to the town before he can get certificate because of, I could say, to open anyways. Um, so I think that's it for that.
Um. Okay. And can I ask, if you were to expand, is there a limit that we have anywhere?
That's why I'm asking about performance standards. Yeah. Oh, I mean, I'm looking for.
Do you have a limit on how many dogs you can have?
I think there would probably be some state licensing requirements, but how that boil? Any idea? I mean, at a certain number of dogs, there's a, the, the different standards take effect in terms of how many you can have or?
Um, I believe there could be, uh, a difference with the kennel license that you're getting from the state based off of whether it's, I, I believe the number is five. Um, so you might need to get a, a separate or additional license if you were to add more.
Well, we can, we can.
There must be a, there must be like a minimum kennel size.
That's kind of what you're thinking. Yeah, that would dictate how many dogs.
Well.
There has to be.
There has to be. No, I don't believe so. Yeah.
Well.
So the kind of South Borough has standards, um, for kennels and veterinary hospitals. Their, um, structure of pens or housing containing the animals should be located not less than a hundred feet from the nearest residence other than owners existing at the time of the permit. All pens runs or kennels and other facilities shall be designed, instructed or location, uh, located on site in a manner that will minimize the adverse effects of surrounding properties. Among the factors that shall be considered are the relationship of the use to the topography, natural and planted for vertical cultural screening, the direction, intensity of prevailing, should have brought my glasses upstairs when the relationship and locations of residences residences and public facilities on nearby properties and other factors. The owner operated kennel, uh, kennel shall maintain a premises in a clean orderly sanitary condition. Temporary storage containers for any kennel or veterinary waste containing, including animal excrement shall be kept tightly covered at all times. If outdoor dog runs are created, they shall be completely fenced in and shall be paved with cement, asphalt, or similar material to provide cleanliness of ease. Um, so it kind of, oh, there's two words. So any in, uh, installation device for burning oh, gross, excrement soaked wastepapers. I'm so sorry. Our animal origins are remain shall be located minimum distance of four hundred feet from the nearest residence.
Reread that one for us?
No. And all other relevant performance standards and articles be in the chapter.
I think it's fair to say there are some additional standards.
Yeah, there are. Sorry.
So we're looking at this. Uh, we're going to need to see, you have some distances measured.
Yep.
So we're going to need to please go through and make sure that you've listed all of those. And if you can't uh, submit a waiver, whether or not, well, granted, I can tell you yet, uh, uh, I mean, it seems relatively low impact, but you know, we do live by what the ordinance says.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and we'll, we'll work with you as best we can within those confines. Uh, but Jen, Jen will help you with that as well. You may put in a couple of additional lines here for distances, the property line, the bones.
Okay.
Uh, and then clarify like the type of material you intend to use within the fenced areas or we've learned, uh, or similar materials. Of the direction. Okay. Any, uh, additional board comments?
Buzz will talk nicely done.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is it day boarding or, uh, day boarding and overnights or what's the, or both or other than that?
Uh, I think we're going to really focus on overnight boarding. Um, I think there may be some times we'll, we'll have some, some full day borders, but, uh, focus on overnight.
Okay.
Did you guys want to set the sidewalk or public hearing?
Yeah, uh, so the next step would be, you know, a public hearing. Uh, Jen, how is our next meeting looking?
It's looking pretty empty, which is it.
So.
As of now.
Okay. Do we want to put a public hearing for our next meeting?
Yes, I don't.
Is there a desire for a sidewalk?
Nope. I'd love to visit when it's up and right, but that's.
Yeah, I'm good. I don't need a sidewalk myself. Okay.
Do I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
It looks like that the, yeah, just look at the images real quick to see how close the houses are, but it looks like, uh, the closest on the right side as you're looking at the map is sixty one feet to the, or but the other, the next house is like pretty far away. So I don't think there's.
Well, and, and we're well outside of one hundred foot. Is it the nearest house or the property line?
Well, property line, but I think it says house, right? That or this.
Oh, we'll look into that tomorrow and we'll run GIS on that. I'll give you that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I was just, uh, I don't think the sidewalk is.
Yeah. You know, I think if we just look at those numbers that, yeah, that will tell us in terms of, we're able to do that. Uh, so, uh, how about we set the public hearing for our next meeting? Uh, the motion to twenty first at six thirty. And we're going to waive the sidewalk. We just waived the sidewalk requirement. Do we need to waive that or just not conduct that?
Don't need to do it.
Doesn't even need to do it. Yeah, okay. So a motion to conduct public hearing at the next meeting.
So. Second.
Yeah, you know, in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Uh, work with Jen, we'll review a cyclone review, get waivers if needed, which there clearly are. Uh, it's not applicable really.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll, uh, see you as soon as you can gather this information. Uh, and provide adequate time for us, Jen, to work with you and get it to myself. Uh, whether or not we'll review it at the next meeting, I don't know. It depends on how quickly you can get it done.
Right. So just for clarification, you guys are all set to come back on March twenty first at six thirty. Then you can be here.
Yes.
If anything comes up, let us know and we will schedule you for the next meeting, but we can't change the public hearing. So we'd have to re-alert that. It might take longer.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So moving on to whole business, MSP twenty three, zero, zero, seven, Red Lake Properties. This is the automotive repair out over on, uh, Lord's Lane. Did have a sidewalk a while back. It wasn't at one of the prior meetings, but I know it is for her about, wasn't at that prior stage. Uh, so this plan is being reviewed for final approval tonight. Um, Jen, is there anything to add to this before we review for final?
Yeah. So just to give you guys a little bit of background, um, so I reviewed all the videos from this plan, um, and from this project, and we never expected the site, uh, the sketch plan to move forward. So we just have to do that. I promise you, didn't, I looked in all the minutes. I watched all the videos. Um, so we can do that and accept the final plan in the same meeting if you wish. Um, and then I can get the, uh, the findings of fact drafted up for the next meeting.
Okay.
And get them sent over.
Sounds good.
So I guess for the final, final plan, I mean, I'll certainly let you speak a little bit, uh, did, at the time, were there any questions or concerns needed to be addressed? And if so, have those been addressed? Would you buy a question?
Uh, so from what I recall, uh, we had the shortest public hearing in existence. That was great. At the sketch plan meeting, there was a question about an oil and water separator, and we did provide documentation on oil and water separated of the use for the project. Uh, additionally, we've now provided a formal sketch, or a formal site plan better yet. We have also provided a stormwater, uh, report just to meet the ordinance and architectural drawings. Relatively straightforward, still a ten thousand four hundred square foot building. Um, project be served by a drilled well and a septic system. We've also provided an H H E two hundred form and test pit for, uh, for the post septic system. And realistically, nothing has changed since the last time you saw it. Um, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
My, my only question is if it about Lord Brooke, it's not.
Yeah.
Right, sidewalk, so I'm good.
I did like folded sidewalks we've ever gone on or one of them.
Yep.
Wasn't good.
It was cold.
Yeah.
Well, so nothing has really changed and, and the, the sort of the oil and water will be installed.
Correct. Yeah. So that'll be installed on the interior of the building.
Are there standards or requirements, performance standards, Jen, within our ordinances that require a certain number of clean outs per year? Or is this alarmed? There's going to be alarmed in the event it fills up?
Uh, this, this is an evaporation system, I believe. So it'll all be steamed and sludge in the bottom.
Okay.
That'll be something that you submit with your building application to, record enforcement review to make sure that no other standards need to be met like that. So they'll be on conditions of approval thing today.
Okay.
Um, but as long as it evaporates, probably not.
Sounds good.
But we, that's something that we'll, we'll just give a second look for.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, the sludge needs to be picked up by like an environmental company.
Okay.
All right, so you want one, one bell swoop motion or do you want a motion to accept sketch plan? Why don't we do that as a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, is your motion to this?
Yes, that's one question. I, I, I understand that this is the same automotive service meeting. People bring their cars in front to get fixed.
I believe it's, Gary may have more, more information on this, but I believe it's, it's, um, more for a personal use of, of vehicles. Um.
Well, you said you was at the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's, that, I believe that's correct. Uh, so is, is, is this going to be, um, for, you know, individuals to come off of the street and get their, their vehicle serviced or is this more of a private use automotive?
Just private, a private is just a place to park. I tell you because of what, a place to work on it in the winter time.
Okay. All right. So the paving equipment, I had thought it was going to be associated with like race cars?
Uh, no, that, we had an inquiry for the other lot. Uh, the BMW race team
Okay.
had an issue with that property in, in New Hampshire.
Okay.
And, um, Vincent Balata was that I developed the quarry forty years ago. He owns the BMW race team and, uh, we purchased that property. He still owns property down there.
Okay.
And, uh, he has expressed some interest in building a race shop next door at some point now.
But that's not happening.
No, this is, this is, this building is, uh, any of you have been by the Wells Highway Garage?
Yeah.
Well, I built that, oversaw the construction of that when I worked for the town of Wells. This building makes exactly the same.
But it's, I mean, are you just parking vehicles there or are they being actually?
Yeah, well, in the winter time, we'll put right now, we're in, uh, the other half of the bus barn.
Libby Scott here.
Over here.
Libby Scott?
Libby Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, so that, we'll use it just like we do that half of the building. So be nobody there during the day in the summer time. Because we'll be out paving. They'll be out paving. And in the winter time, they work on the bit, the equipment inside the building.
I have questions, if that's okay.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I think I thought this was something else.
I think, well, I think maybe we all did. So, um, so my only question is, will Libby Scott be parking here overnight? Will there be overnight parking for the big trucks or do they park somewhere else? They want the paving done. They're going to go back to this site and park there, right?
They're parked right at the garage site.
Okay. What time will they be ending? What time do they normally end work? Is there a second shift or?
Generally, we're, they're done about five, five thirty.
For the day, there's no second shift?
No, there's no second shift.
Okay, then I don't have further questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's requirements on the hours of operation.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. Okay.
So I, I'm going to want to see just a condition. I know you're uh, putting in the oil, the sand oil separator.
Mm-hmm.
I will want, Jen, I'm going to want a, a condition just to make sure knowing that it's paving equipment.
Yeah.
That, that be cleaned out by a certified company able to take that material.
Right.
Once a year or as needed.
Right. The, the oil water, the oil water separator will separate the end oil and the, uh, oil will be picked up as something like clean hovers or something.
Yeah, that's, I just want to make sure that there is that limitation.
Typically, that, you know, uh, with the Wells Highway Garage, it was an issue because the trucks come in in the winter time and they're covered with snow and whatnot. So the, the water melts up. We don't have that issue, you know, with, because we're not on the road in the winter time. But the building is designed, the building is designed, it's four inches of pitch from the doors toward the center of the building. So you could dump every barrel of oil in the building. And it goes to the center and we go to the end. So there's no chance of any.
Fine with that. We'll make sure that's going to be picked up by a clean garbage and licensed contractor.
The same system that I put in the big shop and, uh, down at the quarry.
That's an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
Yep, I thought.
I want to make sure that's.
We bought it.
Uh, and then.
Can I ask what, what happens in the mezzanine?
What's that?
What, what happens in the mezzanine?
Storage.
More storage.
Car storage.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept the second, uh, sketch plan?
A motion to make such a sketchy plan as presented.
A second? Okay, they moved in second. I'm in all favor.
Right.
Uh, going unanimous. Is there a motion at this point to, uh, accept, uh, hi, final approval for MSP twenty three, zero, zero, seven?
I motion we accept for final, yes, this, there, this number is.
Twenty, twenty three, zero, zero, seven.
Twenty. That, thanks.
Second? Okay, you can second it all there? Okay, unanimous. And so give us a couple of weeks, meeting or whatever, to come up with a finding of fact.
We'll let you know when you're on the next agenda.
Okay.
It will be the next meeting. If not, it will be the first meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
This would be a great site for solid.
Good to go.
For what?
Solid. Sort of like that in the building. You have a nine, many by definition.
Next project, there's no representative here.
Okay, whatever. Uh, okay, moving on. MSP twenty two, zero, zero, three, San Villas State, find the fact in conditions of approval. I sent the board what I had, uh, this afternoon, and I understand since then, uh, there's been a few, uh, minor edits, which is in front of you, so I, this, this is the document, correct, Jen? It was updated by the attorney?
That is the updated document.
Uh, so it's been reviewed by the attorney, edited by the attorney. Uh, I read it. I'm good. That being said, uh, you want a minute to read it or is that a motion to approve?
Uh, I had, the one question I had was on number six, which, uh, was.
End date, page six?
Page seven, sorry, conditions of approval. Uh, number six. So the new private road access from Little Fund Road, the San Villas State subdivision will be posted with appropriate road signs stating emergency access only and no throughway. I thought that there was some ambiguity or we need some clarification on whether or not the road was being built to town standard with and all that versus like a single lane. And was that cleared up? I assume that it's, it's county standard, but I don't want to.
We, it's in, it's in, uh, in five. Yeah, okay. No, uh, number six, my understanding is that the last meeting.
Maintained.
Okay. My understanding on number six is that, uh, the clarification, the fire chief wanted it not obstructed and should be built to town standard. I don't think we took issue with that. Uh, we clarified at the last meeting, single lane, double eight or whatever. We simply said to town standards, the developer at the time said, yes, it will be built to town standards. So we're good. That's reflected in their plan.
Yeah, and item number five, uh, includes both industry lane and, uh, the San Villas Estates.
Yeah.
Yeah, entrance. It must be open, not obstructed, maintained as town South Berwick.
Maintained, but not, it doesn't, it doesn't say built, but yeah.
So, and, and, and that's in the plans and the town will ultimately have to make a determination later on, not at our level. If, if they want to, you know, accept it as a town road, a public way, but then the town is going to need proof, evidence that it was built to town standards. But that's one of their.
Yeah.
So that's not something that we can say yay or nay on. What?
I'm just, that's a thing.
Oh, okay.
No, no. What?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Okay. Any other conversation on it? Is there a motion to approve the findings of fact for uh, MSP twenty two, zero, zero, three?
I move we approve findings of fact for twenty two, zero, zero, three. In conditions of approval. Second.
Move second into the further conversation. All favor? Motion passed.
When you hand that to Greg, we'll accept his signature and date. Yeah, they can, they can accept findings and facts without them here.
No, no, can I see him?
Well, here.
I'm done. Sure.
That would copy.
I have an extra one. Have you if you want. I have an extra one, if you want.
It sounds like there's at least some luck.
He does.
Yes.
We talked about this yesterday.
Yeah. No, you got it.
What we're here for, is what we do.
Uh, okay, any comments from the board members? Any other business?
So we have something that's coming in from the board, um, it's for the FEMA.
So the flood plain?
Yep.
Yeah.
You guys will see that, um, on the next agenda, uh, we have all the documentation from that, you guys will kind of go over it. And public hearing, send it to town council.
So. This is, in my view, if anybody's been following that, uh, kind of pro forma. FEMA released a new set of flood maps, it's been going on for like ten years. Yeah, uh, they finally released them forever. Yeah, and, uh, they've been.
This is time for climate change.
Right, uh, so.
Changing them again.
Perfect.
So I guess, you know, uh, to keep that process going. Towns don't really have an option to accept it, they don't accept it, then they become ineligible for legal assistance. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to make the assumption here, if someone wants to move out of these. So my question, Jen, is, can we just, nothing prevents us from, uh, having, we just are required to have a public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, can we have a public hearing scheduled for our next meeting too? And, uh, we'll do one at six thirty to the kennel, and we'll do another one for this, and we'll obtain public comment, we'll have our deliberations and we'll go from there.
Sure.
Awesome, there.
That sounds wonderful, what time will this public hearing be?
Immediately follow.
So.
Uh, six thirty-two.
Smart, okay.
Six, uh, six forty, I think.
Well, I don't.
Have you talked to your neighbors?
Um, yes. Do you know if there's going to be any opposition?
I, from what they've told me, there's going to be no opposition.
Okay, so.
Thirty-two it is.
Be six forty to be generous.
Okay, but just remember, if you close that at six thirty. Right away, then we do have to wait around the ten minutes so you can start.
They'll just say, uh, you know, make it begin at six thirty-two, and we'll just do one and two, you can do that. The two, six, it'll be fine, the two and both at six thirty.
Answer it.
Six thirty-two.
Okay.
Yep. No, seriously, right, why wait around?
I agree.
Yeah.
I like it.
If people have a problem, they'll come out.
Jen, wasn't there a, um, a change of use downtown for your restaurant, is that, are we going to see that one?
So actually, that, um, the restaurant that you're seeing downtown, if you've been following the historic commission, they don't need to come back in front of you because they were already a restaurant, it was an additional restaurant that was going to be coming in. And we haven't heard back from them, and then there's a massage parlor that might be coming in that we haven't heard back from either. So we're just waiting for those applications to kind of come through.
Okay.
Really massage at fun, or the?
I don't know.
Therapist?
What's the difference?
Fun.
I have no idea.
Well, one has a funny.
Okay. Um, somebody who wants to participate in selling services for massage.
We do have to know.
If you have any knowledge, actually.
Okay.
That, 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 that one would be a change of use, I think, right?
It will.
Going over in.
It will, but the ordinance language is funny on that, and it kind of has like town council needing to approve something like that, so when we get the application, we'll discuss it then if we get that.
Okay, any further comments? Uh, the notable comments, both in the chair.
And we adjourn.
Ooh. Second, all favor, both of the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Good night, everyone, I'm sorry.